Oh yeah.
Welcome.
They're bringing me.
I was like, I was still a little off here. In that third class. I've been on the, I have the box in my car.
Go ahead.
She. Get back to my car. And five hours. I don't know your feelings. I was having a little bit of a heart.
We're going to pull up a couple. He's.
You're pulling out sweat. I'm.
I just think I asked you. You know, cancel me for some. No. I mean, I did from the edge. But I'm. I'm sure. I'm sure. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
You know.
I'm glad that everyone's.
The problem is I don't ask. It's. They're all covered up and we talk. They're all. You know. No. That whole. I think. I think. I'm trying to change it.
You can't be exactly exchange. I'm. It's a good thing to do. So. You know.
I heard you. You're looking at this. It's not just. I'm always. Yeah. I have to do their own. I would. Do those more. And please. Where. Right. So. I guess. Hello. No, I have never tried. I actually know. I didn't know those. I think it's called. I just. And then. I'm. 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 Five. In. For. Now. I'll. 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 But then. Without. I just. 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 I just.
There. There are two sign up sheets in the battery. One for the regular council. Um. By the door. So if you wouldn't speak either one of those, there's a separation sign and see for both.
Yeah. Okay. Yep. That'll be helpful. Okay. That's all. Yeah. Those are good. Yeah. Fair enough.
Ready? Ready?
That's fun.
Ms. Hall, you ready?
Well, we're starting. Now we're. Thanks.
One week.
Oh, you got to have four.
Yeah.
Yes. I have.
We technically.
Yeah. For right now.
There you go. Is she sitting here? Okay. Good. Okay. Guys.
Good evening. To all to order than. I'll remind you, there are two sign up sheets. So if you, if you still are in here and you want to sign up, I have them right here. But this the last chance to sign up to speak this evening. Each speaker will be limited to five minutes and you will not be able to share your minutes. Eddings are joined via Zoom tonight due to travel for work from outside of Mountain Home, Arkansas and Montreal, Quebec respectively. Roll call, please, Ms. Hall. For council.
Um. Is Susan Mathias not here?
She will take her part. I want you to go and do roll call for planning commission and.
Okay, let me start with planning. Mission men. Um. Oh. Mr. Shiftlet is absent. Mr. Dijack.
Present.
And Chairman Barnett.
And now we. Wait.
We're. Right. Mr. Dijack.
Present.
Ms. Hoover.
Here.
Mr. Walsh. We. Have you be. How about Mr. Seward?
Here. Catching, we're catching every other word. I think Bob's having the same issue I am.
Okay.
Does he show one on mute?
He is. Let me.
I got him.
Mr. Walsh, do we have you now? Mr. Walsh, can you hear us?
I'm here.
Fantastic. We got. You know.
Sorry about that.
And then we just. That's okay. We're having some internet connection issues here, so it, it could be spotty a little bit throughout the meeting, so hopefully you'll be able to. Stay with us, you and Mr. Seward both.
And Mr. Mayor, it's your prerogative. You have a quorum, so you can wait. Or you can move forward.
We'll start to. This evening with the invocation. Heavenly Father, we ask for your guidance in the matter of the fourth tonight. Lead us to work with a positive, productive, professional spirit. We pray for the victims, their loved ones in the UVA and Charlottesville communities for the senseless acts of violence which were perpetrated on the UVA campus yesterday. We pray for compassion, strength and wisdom for our world leaders. We ask for your protection for our first responders. The men and women of the military who protect us both here and abroad. Amen. Join us for the pledge, Lee.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started this evening, I would like to make a couple of comments about the tragedy which occurred at UVA campus yesterday. I have a son that's in college. I have one that graduated college last year. As a parent, I cannot imagine receiving that phone call that your child has been murdered at school. I also cannot imagine the individuals who had to make those phone calls. That is not a pleasant place for them as well. The senseless acts, the violence that we continue to have on our middle school, high school and college campuses. It. I don't understand. I don't pretend to be smart enough to solve it. But I would ask everybody, we have to have a start somewhere. And if we can start in our community with compassion and let that spread throughout, I urge you to do that. Somebody somehow, and that won't be this evening. Thank you for your attendance tonight. We'll now. We'll now call the joint public and planning commission to get order six oh eight. This part of the proposed rezoning of a three point one nine acre portion of tax map number one, two, three, dash, eight, dash, L nine, A, from R one to R two. The remaining seven point three oh four acres would remain zoned as our one. There are also two adjoining parts that are already zoned are one that would combine for thirty plus acres altogether. Because the properties are already zoned are one, the developer can build single family homes in accordance with our code of ordinance. I would like to remind everybody again, we are only talking this evening about the three point one nine acres. The staff report and application of rezoning begins on page one of the agenda packet, and I'd like to welcome Mr. Ed Blackwell, Mr. Brian Kinsey with Blackwell Engineering, along with Brian Sullivan of Hope Builders, to present the resign request to council and the planning commission.
Counsel persons. You used to always say councilmen, but that's not. Council ladies. It's councilmen, planning commission. Nurse. Thank you for the opportunity to allow us to bring this rezoning case before you today. The first one. We originally were looking at reason and all this property to R two, but there was some, you know, and, and putting together the plan, maybe flip over to the second page for now. Some town staff, some of the town decision. Makers. Back. So. What's. You're already. So R one was allowed. While we're looking at rezoning, mine is that one. That's there. So I wanted to. So. So. With this plan, the plan we had. Had a bunch of and has. We have a six, eight. How, a single family housing in this development. We. Took eight of those things. It's on. Yeah. Jay. The back. On these houses. Have a Dexter. Redstone. Robin. High side. Party. Also spec some vinyl. The typical building. Something they got back and feedback from. From. On the town. There's. About this decision. That. We don't want all of one type. Pack. Like all of. We're. Often. We also have a property in. I manage typically. We flash. It's just. But we think look. We think like part of the town is compressed. Talking with that, we don't have any of the same type of. Looking at. And what we feel is. So again. In a lot.
Can I? Can I interrupt? The people online can't hear you. Is that microphone on? No, I think the red needs off.
Tap it. There you go.
We're the proper. After the. There's. Type of. Outside of this, also that we won't have eight of the exact same. We're getting one. But this is low air. Um, we did talk in this plan. Um, we need to have a turn coming off of places. We're going. When we give up the city dot pick and the term line. Do a left turn lane on the east end requires. We haven't done. Uh. Probably. It's possible. We have to work it up right away in return line there. So. Well. That'll be part of the structure there, whether it's R one or R two. So all we're asking tonight is just this lower portion of the R one to R two to allow eighteen of the standard. We're. If there's something that's pretty strange. I would be prepared or to take the house. For me particularly.
There we go. There it went.
Yeah. I'm happy to do. I would like to. Know what the. This was, I was never informed with that, and I don't, you know, I don't care really what they look like, because I'm sure they'll be beautiful, but I'm just concerned about the minutes and the traffic going on two fifty seven. And six to seven homes. And it's already a lot of traffic on there, so I didn't know if we got the results of the V dot study yet, because I, I would, I just, I need to know that.
V dot has not done there.
There's more, there's more people in the community that have more questions about about the traffic and what the siding of the building is. I don't, so I just didn't know. Results.
I, I can answer that with my microphone if you want. So. So. This is a study, I believe, based on V dot standards. We have communicated with V dot. They have not, until they turn in their final plans, V dot doesn't assess.
So you don't go ahead of time.
Well, we've talked to V dot and they're agreeing. I have communicated to V dot strongly and to the applicants that not only. Only a matter of horse and buggy, bicycles, farm vehicles and single occupancy vehicles. So. But once a subdivision, plaque comes in, then it goes out to review with all the county agencies, V dot. And. Those, we have had action we can do about the remaining houses.
Yeah. One. So we got. Send. About.
Because I know you tapped to. Well, that's. That's like.
The. Part of the. These. Those. That's kind of more. We, we love to have a road there. The time. Of all kinds. We're open. That's why we're getting Bob's plans. He does it next. Um. We would. Then. Change. Over on the. That left. And. So. Keep it. See, they're not. They're even from. One of them. See, I. The one. Not do a different type of traffic study. It's done. You do have a different. Type of situation.
Advocated, they're not gonna, they're. Not gonna do anything different.
Yeah. That's our goal is to. Women get good as part of this. So. The public. I just. Do the company. You can bring in a family. But. It's. That's all. It's on it. But. You see, you see that. See any part of the report, but.
Acquired for final approval that you guys secure any right of way. That. You need for left or right. Turn.
It was part of the. So then. Office. Have. Three. We have. That. For them. Look. Um, well, when. It's like this. Well. A single family. Hours. So. We just. We. Play on it. It's. You know. For a while. All right. We just. We. Do that. Like that's not the right time one and now. Don't have. All of.
The new podium. Is it on? Any, any other questions for me? So. What we're looking, there was a small portion of this subdivision. The rezoning from. From R one currently to R two to allow eight more, eight more units, not the total. We're not doing the whole subdivision as far as a preliminary plat at this point. Of course, the subdivision has a right, it's a by right use for, for the zoning, but this little two, three point one five acres will allow for eight more duplexes, eight more total units, take eight of the single family lots and make them duplexes with the conditions of the type of siding and type of units.
And. Mr. Leckel, with the, with regards kind of dovetailing the, the comments about the turn lanes and everything, you know, we talked about, you know, buggy and bike access. You know, I, while I understand V dot may not. You know, require that to be incorporated. And you're aware that right now the town has considerations on working on a bike buggy lane study in the future, specifically along two fifty seven. So I'm curious how that might be, you know, incorporated into that calculation.
Well, we would, when we do the. I guess when we circle back with beat out for the preliminary plat process, we'll have to. Do. Take the warrant analysis that we currently do with V dot and get some estimate for how buggy traffic accounts. You know, it's, you know, right now you, you base it on vehicle trips per day, but a buggy would. Should up that number, which would mean we would, the warrants for a turn lane would come and play quicker. You know. It may. Yeah. So I, we haven't looked at, to that, that detail for the overall subdivision. We wanted to see whether we have, you know, these, these three acres, eight, eight more units or duplexes would be allowed. And then that, because that'll affect my numbers going to V dot a little bit. It's only eight more, but. We need to account for that.
Eight more lot.
No, I can get sixty single family now. I can get sixty single family and eight duplexes, so it'll be a total of seventy six lots. So we'll go from sixty eight to seventy six. With, if this rezoning is approved. So we just, we're increasing the, just eight lots in the whole subdivision. By having some duplex and, and having the duplexes allows the developers some mix to have some. And before we had them kind of mixing the whole development, but we were getting a little bit of. Uh, that's just like pushback, but just concerned about reason on the whole property. So we just cooked this lower southeast corner and we'll concentrate the duplexes in that corner. So we're only increasing eight total units from what we were originally planning. And all the lots in this meet, the single family lots meet your town or as far as the minimum set of size and acreage for each lot. And we have some common areas and stuff like that. We haven't. Looked into, we have some, some open space we're keeping on top of the hill for to be part of the community, put some walking trails and things like that up there.
To that end, can you speak to, has there been any consideration for screening or buffering along property lines for any part of this project?
Um. Well, we're here just for the three, the duplex lots, and it backs up to the old, part of the old rail line, which is owned by Mr. Rhodes and some farm. And we, we didn't, you know, we didn't look into that, but we, we absolutely could. The back of these lots on the south west, east side is actually, we're going to have a long detention pond, so between us and Mr. Rhodes' property is ten spot. But I know it's, you know, we, my granddad was a farmer. We, we have farms and they put manure out in the, the certain times of year, and it's going to be, you know, sixty feet away. And so maybe, I guess, I'll get with my client, maybe we put in a tree buffer along that backside and a bad idea from a, just a practicality for our, when we sell the houses.
Mr. Mayor, if I could add a couple of comments, I just want to be clear that the site plan that he's showing here is not proffered because it's separate from that. So, and even the site plan with the duplexes is not proffered because they don't have the whole site plan finalized. So. Um. Although it's up there, it's for illustrative purposes. And also just wanted to reiterate, it's our belief that this land came over to, was annexed in the town in two thousand and nine, and that it came over as single family. And I don't have enough history on that right now to speak to it, but perhaps somebody who owns the land now can speak to that, but.
This point will prove enough to. Public. Power. My. We are. Just. You don't know what I was on. A while.
I'm sorry. If. Yeah. If you're. Coming here. Thank you.
So, so I've got some, some experience with this. I've been on council for a while, haven't been on in four years now. So to start off with, to kind of speak to what Angelo was just saying, this is, I think, ten years ago, or more, this was brought over to the town and it was R one, the. The reasoning or not the reasoning, the. The project that, that was hoped to be used for was like a planned community fifty five and older, that'd be less impact on the community services, less impact on the traffic, you got less density in there, you got normally just two people per household, they each got a car and then they don't, they don't travel during work time and school time. So that property ten, twelve years ago, and I don't know who the, the developer was that was going to put in a planned community for fifty five and older. And that fit with the town. You know, their layout, you know, our population, you know, that sort of thing, and the, the traffic along that road, it didn't seem like a big impact. But here we are now, I don't know, twelve, thirteen years later. Now we're looking at single family homes and adding multiple family homes, you know, so single family homes, you can have, you know, two unrelated people living in it, multiple family homes, you can have up to four unrelated people living in it. So you can have more people, different types of residents, that sort of thing, you get up, you know, college students, somebody can run it out and, you know, so there's a lot of different things that go on when you go to an R two. The problem with that, even though this is just some small piece, I'm not sure, it's, it's curious to me that you've got this big plot up here and you've only got three acres Lot up here and you've only got three acres you want to do for this, so I'm not sure. What else is going to happen after that, my intuition is that that's going to open up issues for later on, Dr. If we did R two there. There's twenty acres around there, why couldn't we expand that R two to somewhere else, so I don't like the gate that that's going to be opening up for our community. So I would not be in favor of doing R two, R one is enough impact on what's going to happen here, especially if you put sixty seven houses in there. And I spoke to V dots, they did have their initial meeting with them. Their estimate is you're going to have ten trips per household, five going out, five coming in, that's going to add about six hundred and seventy cars. On that road a day, you know, if there's sixty seven houses, you know, that's, that's their estimate, um, so that's gives you an idea of kind of what would happen there. And then that to put in turning lanes and all these other stuff, which if you go by South Breeze, you want to widen that road to train lanes, and that's going to change that whole dynamic of that, put a road right there, we buy Mr. Burke hold his buggy shop. So, I mean. And that's going to happen, I guess, whether it's, you know, we. Approve it or not, because you're going to have single family homes in there, the problem is you let something small like that happen and you don't know what's going to happen down the road, you can't control it. If you've already got a precedent set, and looking at this, guys, I don't see what benefit this has to anybody in the town. Going from R one to R two, how does that benefit any of the residents? I mean, I've looked at it fourteen different ways, it doesn't benefit anybody, I mean, as town residents, that doesn't benefit us, it might benefit these guys to add a few more houses in there. But I, you know, being on the finance committee for eight years, I know that. The residential housing is not a, if you're thinking you get a bunch of tax revenue, you're not. One of the benefits living in Dayton is that we've got a low real estate tax, right? Seventy to eighty percent of our revenues is we sell water to Cargill. This is going to be that, this is considered a loss leader, you add residential housing, it doesn't pay for the services we provide, whether it's water, whether it's public works, whether it's police. So you start to add a whole bunch of more houses that aren't paying or covering the services that we provide. Next thing that happened is, you have to raise taxes on the people that are here to pay for those services, because you got more people living there, using the services, not paying the. And it takes away the benefit of living in Dayton, I mean, I, I, you know, you know, I mean, look, look at this right here, small town, hometown, I mean, we're a small town, I mean. R two, it, it does not fit with our motto, does not fit with what we want to do with our residency with anything, so I just. Okay, so, so I would just have you guys look at planning commission council, how does that benefit us at all? I mean, that's, that'd benefit, uh, personal self-interest, it doesn't benefit anyone sitting there. So that's what you, when you're deliberating this, just please keep that in mind, like, this doesn't seem to benefit, if it does, please tell me, you know, I'll, you know. Look at my notes and figure out how that benefits our, our residents by making that R two. Has this gone to plan commission yet? Okay, so it goes from here, planning commission, they make the recommendation, you guys, you guys review it, make your, your decision, I saw in the notes, planning commission, like, you know, later November, and then your December council meeting, you'll make a decision. Right, right, okay, I just, I couldn't remember the order of like, public hearing, if they had to hear it, see it first to give you guys the, okay.
I'm Kelly Hannan, I live at three oh five College Street, and I don't have a lot to add except for, um. I tend to agree with what Mr. Daley is saying, this doesn't add a lot of benefit to our community. If you look at the housing development directly across the road or across, um, two fifty seven from this proposed development. Um, it's a vast difference in housing type, housing density, and certainly bringing in the R two with the multi, um, housing. Pieces, I think, does not fit well for where it's being placed and what we're looking to do with the.
I got a couple of things to add, I'm, I'm at two or four Cascade, um, in South Breeze, um, so a couple of things to add, uh, for consideration. Is in twenty seventeen, South Breeze had twenty one. Undeveloped lots, so we're talking about. I mean, it, it took a long time to get there. And that didn't, and we're talking about fifty nine before V dot will do anything, fifty nine, fifty eight, fifty nine, sixty, something in there, so, so that's a concern I have. And when you go from R one to R two, um, and Jeff had stated that, um, right, a single family R one, no more than two unrelated people. When you go to R two, there's not more than four, or it's supposed to be not more than four unrelated people, so that could lend itself to. I mean, you, you could rent that out to four college students, um, you could do those things, and I don't know that that's, I, I, I don't know if that's where Dayton wants to go, I don't think, and it is a slippery slope that we go on. And for now, there's no potential for rezoning, I think Jeff had stated that, but, but since the plat, um, is not part of the proper. There's no requirement for the developer to follow that. Right? I'll ask that question, there's no, I mean, we can draw nice pictures and do those things, but they don't have to do that. But we're rezoning this section of R two into R two, and it just leads us down this slippery slope, now, also on the proffer. Very. Wide range, if, if I read the proffer right, I think there's only three things and it's not very, um. I'll pull it up here, the proffer only stated three things. And you guys probably looked at that, but in those three things, I'm looking at drawing one. Oh, you got, all right, these are the three things, the exteriors of the building to be built on lots will consist of an even mix, um, which is great, right? Hardy prank, smart siding, brick or stone, building shall be constructed from a selection provided in the architectural packet. Drive well, driveway shall be constructive hard surface material, and then, that's it. That leaves a wide range of what these properties can look like, um, and I, I just don't think that we're.
Can I interrupt, there's a fourth proffer that was submitted tonight, um, and that is that the land be rezoned to be used for single family housing. On eight duplex, eight duplex lots with no more than sixteen units total.
So I just, I just think it, it leaves it wide open and it gives us a lot of, a lot of leeway there, which I don't know if we, um. I don't know if that's what the town of Dayton really needs, so I'll leave it at that.
Hi, my name is Jeannie Mae, my husband Kenneth and I am with it nine, nine fifteen Mason Street on the west side, um, of town, and. I just want to let you know that about a year ago, I petitioned or asked V dot if they could consider lowering the speed limit from the town limits at Lot, Limestone Lane. To, um, thirty five, because it doesn't start until thirty five until, um, almost to the intersection down the street or. I'm not sure the name of the building, but anyway, they. Responded that they had, they, look, we get a lot of milk trucks coming down the street, bicycles and things like that, so when we're considering, um. The. Population, I'd like to. Like it to be, that's all, thank you.
Be where this progress to, on the other side of the street, the town limit ends at South Bree, the edge of South Breeze, so. It's. A little confusing to some. I don't know if that played into V dot's thing, but we'll.
Via email, yeah, if I may, uh, from Terry and Harold Nicely of Bartley Street. The rezoning would have a negative impact on the community of Dayton, currently the traffic on Mason Street exists of a significant amount of tractors and buggies and the increase in traffic. Would increase the risk. Things desirable and rocky first step and higher densities to other land developments in Dayton and to decrease existing homes' property values. To me, it seems not to make more housing per acre, please keep the zoning as is and preserve the town of Dayton as the beautiful rural community that it is, thank you.
It's all for Tuesday night. Yes, sir.
There, thanks. Okay, now we'll carry on with the council meeting, I need a motion to. The minutes for the regular town.
Moved.
Thank you, Mr. Bradford, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, ma'am. Minutes.
I got eighty and Steve.
Roll call to approve the minute.
No.
Mr. Dijack?
Aye.
Ms. Hoover?
Aye.
From Lee Falls, do we have you?
Aye.
Yeah, I can hear you now.
Yeah, yes, aye.
There's Mr. Ward.
Mr. Seaward is.
Yeah.
That an eye from you?
Aye. The internet is really.
All right, and Mayor Jackson?
Aye, motion passes, thank you. Eve Lawrence, can we have? Report on that, please?
Sorry, uh, basically, um, as you know, we had twenty five thousand in contingency for the water and sewer department, but we've already had to replace a. VFD pump in the installation, which, um, you all had already allocated that container. As that's getting repaired, we realize that pump number three needs to be repaired, this work includes bringing in a crane. And removing the pump with the underground component, um, new packing box, all kinds of stuff, and then the pump, it's reinstalled. We had the same thing done to pump number two in two thousand and nineteen and it. Came. About. Or the cost has gone up now, this pump has not been done before. Um, and it's time to get that done because it's acting up, we could run, we can run on the other pumps for a short period of time, but if anything else happens. Uh, we would need this done, the total, the lead time will be five to seven weeks, that's why we are really afraid to leave it until next fiscal year, um, the total cost would be. Thirty three thousand. Six hundred and eighty, we're proposing to, to increase revenue from reserves, just bringing them over from reserves going into the water sewer capital items. Of thirty three thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars would be moved from reserve. To capital item for the water below the one percent threshold for the advertised budget amendment. Um, so the motion, the new motion is at your desk to, if council sees fit, uh, we recommend a motion to amend that FY twenty three budget to include revenue. And that says for budget purposes only because that revenue has already been counted as rep. Revenue technically, um, and if we just move it over, um, and then the expenditure and it's got the line items there, that meant that would bring the total budget up to six million, ninety six thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars. And that total budget does include all the, for the amended budget.
And I was the only one on council at this time, um, but just before Ms. Lawrence got here. We had a near catastrophe with pumps, because we had two pumps, we were having problems with, you were on council at the time. Um, so it's, this is important to be able to get it, it's lead time that it takes, um, so this is a, one of those expenses that you have to get taken care of right away. It's not something you can kick the can down the, uh, the road and hope for the best.
A million dollars in our, um, reserve fund, which is well over what we need to have, even when we take out the remainder for the, uh, construction on the water treatment plant, we'll have more than enough.
Thank you, Ms. Lawrence, I need a motion to approve the budget adjustment for fiscal year twenty three to include a transfer. From reserves of thirty three thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars and approve the expense as a capital item for the water treatment plant, this is below the one percent threshold for a budget amendment.
So move.
Thank you, Mr. Dijack, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Hoover. Is there any discussion?
I can third.
You're a little late there, Bob.
Yeah, I got.
Do we have any discussion? Roll call, please, Ms. Hall.
How about we go to you first, Mr. Wall?
Aye.
Okay.
Fantastic. And Mr. Seaward?
Aye.
Great. Ms. Mathias?
Aye.
Ms. Estes? Ms. Hoover?
Aye.
Mr. Dijack?
Aye.
Mayor Jackson?
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. We're now at the public comments portion of tonight's meeting. We'll now hear from any in-person citizens who signed up for the public comment portions tonight's meeting. Each speaker limited to five minutes and not be charged. Actually, we don't have to go through all that because we only have one person that signed up. Ms. Crank?
Good evening, everybody. Merchants are busy as sandals getting ready for the holiday season. Thank you for the holiday, holiday date and discovery edition. If there are extra black and white copies, I know the Dayton Market and Dayton Mini Mark would give those out for those folks who don't get our newsletter because they don't get a water bill. The Dayton Market is in search of carolers for December 10th. If anybody's interested to contact, I call her Cindy Lou Who at Whiskey Valley Jerky Shop, but for December 10th, they like to have some carolers. Mayor Jackson. And by the way, I caught your passionate compassion moment earlier. And I, I too have had a hard day with the things that have happened in Charlottesville. And we don't have the answers, but we just keep praying. Just as you serve our town, let's saltville community with your business main course sandwiches. I'm here to say Councilwoman Estes has this same passion for her town. May lose perspective as witnessed in our last meeting. We all need to look deeper as to why that happens. Frustration, passions, emotions, et cetera. I like to say, let's all of us look at 2023 for all town council members elected to fulfill their sworn duty to this town. And please consider reinstating her because lastly, in the spirit of the holidays where forgiveness can be a part. Again, I really like for you to consider reinstating Councilwoman Estes for her committee appointments. Many of us today do not include her with our discussions because she will get frustrated because her hands are tied. And so we don't include her. And I've explained that to her. As hurtful as it might be, we don't want to appoint that may leak over into other meetings and other opportunities. But again, and lastly, fight it in your heart. She's got two more years. Please reinstate Councilwoman Estes back to her committee appointments for 2023. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Then we'll move on to staff reports with Ms. Lawrence.
Thank you. My staff report begins on page.
This, we, and I apologize, I can't set a precedent by letting somebody decide that they're going to speak during the meeting. Have to have it before. If I set a precedent to let you do it this evening, then anybody else can do it at any point before the meeting actually started tonight. We called the meeting to order at 6:02. No, so that was, that was the regular meeting. And, and I even made a comment, this is the last chance if anybody wants to sign up. And I just can't set the precedent to allow somebody to speak midway through the meeting. Because if I set the precedent, the next month and the following month, everybody's going to want to be able to do that. So I apologize for that, but we'd be more than happy to hear your comments at the December meeting. Ms. Lawrence?
My staff report starts on page 19. The water plant upgrade continues. It's still on target. Hopefully we'll start training. Hopefully January 9th, if not, it'd be the 23rd because of because of the holiday and some other issues, but we should all be, the plant should be tested, all installed, tested and staff trained by early February. There's some other items on, on there. The other item of consideration that I have is that we have a old police speed trailer out there. We had talked with finance committee last month about disposing of the equipment. They asked that we wait and hold on to it, get it updated and begin using it again. The chief did some research. There's three different marine batteries in there and some tires that would need to be replaced. So it would, his estimate costs more than a thousand dollars to replace the speed trailer. He's asking that we dispose of it and if we would like to put a smaller model that would fit on the other, on the narrow streets, a more updated model that we could put that in the CIP. I need council's permission to, or council's approval to dispose of it if that's the desire. Our police committee did discuss a mail last week.
So I need a motion to dispose of the speed limit sign in public auction.
So move.
Or to speed radar. I'll just. Ms. Mathias, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Hoover. All in favor? Do I need a roll call? Roll call vote, please?
Ms. Estes? Ms. Mathias?
Aye.
Ms. Hoover?
Aye.
Mr. Dijack?
Aye.
Mr. Seaward?
Aye.
Mr. Wall?
Aye.
And Mayor Jackson?
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you very much. Now we'll move to Ms. Smith for the treasures report.
Um, Mayor, council, you have one treasure report here. Have anything to add other than the carryover, you may know there's changed a little bit just because budgetary wise, the account numbers are the same from the carryover to the current year. So we are using up the carry. You know, the tools we use for that.
Clear as mud. Any questions? Thank.
You all have my staff report. If you have any questions, I will happily answer.
Thanks for on board and Officer Ehrman and look forward, hopefully may we can have him introduced at a future meeting.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Ms. Lawrence for Public Works?
Sure. Can I just add on the police department report? We did receive notice that we're going to get a cops grant to hire a temporary accreditation manager to get that process finished. That also is going to require a budget amendment. But we do not know yet when that, we haven't gotten our final paperwork, so we don't know when it's going to start and we don't know how much we'll expend this fiscal year. So that will probably be coming towards the next month. Public Works report is on page 25. As you know, they've been vacuuming leaves as quickly as they can. They were out all day today and we have somebody out sick. They're going to continue going. They will go around the town at least two more times starting this week. So please be patient. They'll get hopefully around the whole town again this week. And then they'll continue until early December. But we've gotten a lot of calls from people. So you just, we have one, one truck and two people assigned to it. So they go as quickly as they can. Monday they do bio, the traditional bio before they do the leaves. And the park restrooms will be closed. It's going to get down in the twenties every night this week. So they'll probably winterize the bathrooms tomorrow in the parks and they will be closed for the rest of the winter. We have nobody else who's reserved them coming up. I think that's about it for Public Works.
I got a comment, kind of sort of Public Works, but Dayton West, Rhodes Hill Drive, they went through and fixed all the driveways that were cracked, all the curb and guttering that was cracked. And last week they actually paved Rhodes Hill Drive. So that is, that's been a long time project coming, but we have that now paved. Ms. Lawrence for the Water Department?
Well, speaking of Rhodes Hill Drive, let me just say that I, I forgot to mention glow fiber coming into town. We have been pulling our hair out with glow fiber and we now have established a better system and they promised to keep us informed. But they did, I guess, some people at Rhodes Hill, they said they put hangers on everybody's door a couple of weeks ago. Apparently it was a windy day. Not everybody got noticed and we didn't get noticed that they were starting in Rhodes Hill. They also hit a water line one night up there. So our staff was up there late that night repairing the water line. We will get glow fiber to reimburse for the sidewalk repairs that are going to have to be made and the repairs to the water line. So in that whole process, and I know I promised people that they would get, that we would get, and we have mandated a glow fiber that we don't have permit process, but we want to be communicated with at least two weeks ahead of time there to notify us before they go in a neighborhood. So they are, of course, up in Willow West, Willow West and Rhodes Hill were supposed to be phase three originally. So my understanding today is that they have to get that stuff in line because that equipment eventually will need to be up. They will then move to the Old Town of Dayton coming up and those will be not buried lines. The ones up in Rhodes Hill are buried. The ones in the old part of town will be aerial connecting into the lines that now that's not to say there are a couple of places where they'll have to put equipment and it will be in the right away. And I've told them to please, please, please let me know if they're going to dig in somebody somewhere or put something up. But they will start pretty soon down in Old Town, old section of town. It will not, when they're done there, it won't be working right away probably. But you should hear from glow fiber with door hangers on your doors as to when they'll be in the neighborhood doing their work. They have promised me, of course, they also promised me last week, they'd bring me a sample of the door hanger and I haven't seen it yet. Well, she called today to say she was groveling and I said, well, let me know. Keep going. So anyway, I think the water line kind of spurred them into action and the fact that I copied a whole lot of people. But anyway, glow fiber is in town. They are working. They're hoping to be done by the end of December and we should start hearing from them as to who wants to hook up and start paying them. So the next report is Water Department. Is that where we're going with that? Okay. The Water Department report is on page 26. Ooh, look at Jennifer's getting fancy with all her stuff. So any questions on that? No, well, yeah, it's, it's a cow blowing leaves. I think, I don't know, maybe it's a man. A man in overalls. I don't know.
No, he's vacuuming leaves. And the water treatment plant continues to be on schedule. They installed some of the equipment inside. So looking forward to that project coming to a close shortly after beginning the year. Ms. Hall for Community Development?
All right. My staff report is on page 27 and I don't have anything to add, but I'm happy to answer questions if anybody has any.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Lawrence for Economic Development?
Sure. Economic development, as Ms. Crank mentioned, we did do a separate holiday flyer that included both the, and I don't think Ms. Crank mentioned that Black Friday, the downtown will be having their small town Christmas again. And I've already gotten a call from somebody saying they heard from somebody, when's it going to be? That's a lovely event. And then it also, we tried to get it out in time to do the Dayton Market customer appreciation. And some people got theirs on Saturday. I got mine today. So at any rate, are there any questions about anything there? I suppose to. At the Christmas parade, I should say the Christmas parade is going to be Friday, December 9th. We will have a town float. We'll have a couple of town trucks. But we would encourage all businesses or businesses, merchant associations or anybody to, to do a float. We do have a couple of businesses in Bridgewater. So
Bridgewater is doing their parade again this year.
They are. Bridgewater and Harrisonburg are both doing their parade. So we probably won't have quite as many people as last year. Are there any other questions? Oh, yes. Christmas ornaments. We will have Christmas ornaments. I believe they're going to be the Dub Park Pavilion decorated for Christmas kind of thing. And I'll find out pretty soon when they'll be running and I'll let everybody know. But yes, people have asked about that.
Right. We'll still have the sold it.
Yes, yes, we'll reach out to businesses if they want to participate and we'll be selling them at the window. What? At Dub Park Pavilion decorated for Christmas, I think.
Thank you, Ms. Lawrence. Mr. Bowman, Legal Counsel?
I have nothing.
Thanks, sir. And we'll go on to committee reports. We'll start with Mr. Dijack for Economic Development.
Yes, we did have a meeting on the, the first, we have, our next meeting will be December 5th. And wanted to, again, yeah, I think that's great. We've got, it is the season. We've got a lot to be thankful for coming up here and and grateful for the businesses for small town Christmas. I know that's always fantastic. We also kicked off the season. It's all with the customer appreciation at the market and so plenty of businesses to stop in and visit. And thankful for Silver Lake Mills Bicentennial. That was a fantastic event too. And again, it just reminds us of how unique and special this town is and how grateful it is to be able to live and work here. So with that being said, I know there's, we got the, I'm glad David mentioned about the Dayton Discovery that went out for the holiday edition like we did last year. So that's good. There's too many events to count. I know Fort Harrison's also doing some items. I think they've got something coming up just about every weekend. So plenty to do there. I'd also take the opportunity to just remind everyone, I appreciate everyone coming out tonight for, you know, for the public hearing. And, and likewise, we will be reconvening the planning commission meeting on Thursday. So in addition to considering that rezoning, this is also the time where we're updating the town comprehensive plan. And I know a number of you, thank you, you know, over a hundred responses last year when we sent out that, the community survey. And so, you know, when we talk about land use decisions and, and, you know, when, you know, when something was zone back in the day or different projects or how we envision the town, this is the time to get involved too. So that, you know, in the future, when we have other projects that come up, we have a, a good comprehensive plan to kind of help guide us and, and show exactly what we want Dayton to be in 10, 20, 30 years ahead. So, so anyway, just invite everyone to, if you are planning to come out for the Thursday's planning commission meeting, to stick around a little bit there because this all Ms. Lawrence will have a tree.
I believe Maggie wanted you to promote the holiday shop local.
Oh, I will do that too. Yes. Yeah. Six o'clock. Yeah, I'm sorry. Yes. Thursday at six is the planning commission meeting. And of course we'll reconvene for the consideration of the rezoning, but also talk about the comprehensive plan update. So definitely. That is a good question that we can look into. Absolutely. Appreciate that. Yes. Thank you, Smithy's. Yeah. And so these are the kind of questions we evaluating over time. But, but anyway, I appreciate that. Yes. Shop local. We've got the, the contest. Angela, would you like to highlight that for us?
Sure. Sorry. I forgot to talk to Bradford ahead of time. So it was in the E news and then Maggie sent out another E or email from her email address, but we've got some combo passes for Massanut and which are good for ski, golf, water park, I think, anything that you can do. They don't expire until September. So the giveaway is, we just need to hear from any businesses that want to have a box in their shop. We're not doing a punch card this time, but we'll give you some cards and anytime somebody spends $25 or more in the shop, they can fill out a card, put it in a box. We'll gather the boxes up by December 21st so that we can draw before we leave for Christmas. If people want to give their prizes as a Christmas gift or use it while the kids are out of school, it'd be done by then. And we may do another promotion if this works later in the year with a couple of other passes, but. But, so any businesses are encouraged to let Maggie know before, by the end of this week, and she'll bring a box and some cards to your business. And then she's just asking that you get them back to her by the twenty-first or the twentieth of December.
All right, we'll continue with you for finance, Mr. Dijack.
All right, well, since we took care of the VFD pump earlier, nothing to report for finance committee.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Seaward for Infrastructure?
We did not meet, so there is nothing to report.
Thank you, sir. How about Parks Recreation and Beautification?
And I will say ditto, we did not meet, so have nothing to report.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Mathias for Personnel?
Yes, we met twice. The Personnel Committee met twice. The first meeting was a closed, I guess, it was a closed, private meeting, and all of these were posted in order to just review and begin the process for the annual review for an employee. And then we also met again to finalize it, to have all of the data collated and to meet individually. We also had feedback individually, so we finalized everything in our second private meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Mathias. Ms. Hoover for Police?
We met and just want to congratulate Chief Trout for being fully staffed again. That's great for the, for the town and for staffing, and nothing else to report at this time.
Thank you very much, and I had my comments earlier. Does anybody else have any comments? All right, we have no unfinished business. Do we have any new business? All right, we'll now go into closed session, and as we have Mr. and Ms., excuse me, Mr. Waltz and Mr. Seaward attending via Zoom, we will remain in council chambers and ask that anyone not included in the closed session to please exit the building. We don't anticipate any additional business or action items after the closed session convenes, so we should just return to take our certification and adjourn the meeting. However, you are welcome to stay outside and come back in when we are done, if you would like.
No, she's going to shut it down.
As per the town manager's contract, the town council is required to begin her annual review in October. As in years past, the Personnel Committee seeks input from staff, and no one's listening.
I'm listening.
Activating. Might as well, we got to go to the closed session.
I'll take a motion to convene into closed session.
So moved, first went to Virginia Code two point two, that's three, seven, eleven, A, one for discussion. Okay.
Second.
Did she say?
Yeah, all in favor? All opposed? No one to post?
Okay.
I have an issue.
Motion passes.
They updated all of our IT. I've got it on my lap.
We're just staying here.
Would you do me a ginormous favor? Would you
I know you've been up and down.
Take that on like both of those doors and lock the Yes. Thank you.
Yes, get out of here. Yeah, I was going to introduce Melody and then just talk about it.
All right, well, December. Take care, honey.